All right, good morning. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for June 18th to order. It's now 6:01 PM and we will start with the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a few announcements. One, I'm sure everybody's been getting text messages that the state's 911 system was down today, but we've been told that 911 is back up and running, so you should be good. Hopefully you don't need to use it. Another item, cooling center. We had made the Council on Aging open as a cooling center today until 7:30 PM. Tomorrow is Juneteenth, so it's not going to be open unless there is a power outage or some other emergency, and then we would get some information from the Fire Department, Police Department about the availability of a cooling center tomorrow. Otherwise, on Thursday and Friday, it will be available again from 8:30 to 4:30 PM. This meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the Chair at this time. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by calling the Selectmen's office. For anyone interested in volunteering, there are several vacancies on various committees and boards. To see a complete list of the openings, please visit our website at KingstonMA.gov. The FY25 Recycling and Disposal Center sticker sales started on June 3rd. They're available at the Highway Department window on Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Weekend hours begin on June 22nd from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM through July 14th excluding holidays. As I mentioned before, town buildings will be closed tomorrow, Wednesday, June 19th in observation of Juneteenth Day. Please check the website for any other additional events or notices at www.kingstonma.gov. And now, if anybody would like to speak at open forum, please raise your hand. Seeing nobody here in the building, and we don't have anybody online either. Moving right on. Appointments. Our first appointment tonight is with the Plymouth County Commissioners. They are here to present the Board of Selectmen with an ARPA check for Silver Lake High School cafeteria HVAC improvements, the replacement of one HVAC roof for a unit for Silver Lake Regional High School cafeteria. The current rooftop unit is 20 years old, which has outlived its serviceable lifespan of 15 years. The capital expenditure has not been included in the Silver Lake Regional School District's capital plan or operating budget. So, without further ado, I know we have Mr. O'Brien here, our Treasurer, the county Treasurer.
Thank you so much, Chair. And yes, I know you were hoping for the county commissioners, but on behalf of them, I have to apologize, they're all at different meetings right now, and so they sent me, which is great for me because this is my hometown, that's where I started and raised my family, and as I said, where I was a neighbor to Eric Crone, which is one of my many claims to fame, and it's great to be back there. I think one of the commissioners may end up coming in at the last minute, wouldn't be surprised, because they did really want to be here, but on behalf of Chairman Jared Valenzola, Commissioner Sandy Wright, and Commissioner Greg Hanley, we're thrilled to be here to present this check to the town of Kingston. As you know, there was a little controversy early on about Kingston, I'm sorry, about the town, the county of Plymouth administering first CARES money and then ARPA money. We've been grateful that the town of Kingston stuck with Plymouth County because that has inured to the benefit of our 27 communities. Our communities under the CARES Act receive twice as much as any community outside of Plymouth County because we took all the funds and funneled them back to our communities. We're under the same program here under ARPA. I encourage anyone that needs or wants more information about the county's administration of this program to go to our website cleverly named www.plymouthcountyarpa.com, which we did right after we did www.plymouthcountycares.com. But you can see how we're spending this money in our communities, and as you have said, it is important money. You folks have many needs, a lot of which was the result of the pandemic. This is the federal government stepping up and saying, hey, we need to help our communities in Plymouth County saying, and we can help administer that and get it out faster and quicker than if we didn't do that. I am pleased to report that Kingston is now the eighth community out of our 27 to use all of the Plymouth County ARPA money allocated to them. So you have now used all of those resources with this check presentation today. Just some highlights, if I might, as to the checks that we have presented. We presented a check for $1,114,041.27, and that was for the water main replacement project on Main Street, Hillcrest Road, and part of Landing Road. Again, that would have been town money dedicated to that project. You folks recognized this was a good use of ARPA funding and stepped up and put it toward that project. You also received $871,094 for the upgrade at the high school and middle school project, $317,610 for a fiber optic municipal area network here in the town. So very good uses of the resources. And then, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, this money for the HVAC at the cafeteria at the high school. I must say that it has been a pleasure to work with our federal partners, our Senators Markey and Warren, Congressman Keating, and our state partners, of course Representative Lonatra and Senator Moran, and then our town partners. You have a great team here in the town of Kingston. It's a pleasure when I get a call from the town of Kingston. I know that your administrator has both my cellphone and my work number and calls anytime he has a question, and it's just been a real good resource back to our communities. So, we just are fortunate to be able to present. I have a rather large check, which we'd like to take a little picture because we want proof that we actually did deliver the check. I have the real check here to give to the Treasurer, who I see here in the audience as well, as well as all the backup paperwork, which will need to be maintained by the Treasurer for seven years in case there are any questions about these, this particular packet that was delivered to the town. I just can't say enough about the success of this program around Plymouth County in response to pandemic, and to complement the town of Kingston on using the money as suggested in the federal statute. So it's been a great partnership. We're thrilled to have been working with you. Again, the county commissioners wish they could be here. I was supposed to stall for a little bit long, but I think I've done just enough, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
I just want to say, Tom, prior to this board, I was involved in a different committee that was going after money, and you and I had a few conversations on the phone, because it is confusing, but I appreciate your time. I mean, I think if we were doing this through the state administering it, it would have been very difficult to get somebody on the phone, and you know, you and I talked and you helped early on when all of this first started with the pandemic. You really helped us get some money to our schools here in the district, and I really appreciate your time and effort. I know we talked at night, we talked on the weekends, and I appreciate your time.
Well, it's a real value, and you folks are on the front line. So, if somebody has a problem, they call you first. But likewise, you want a voice that you know and that is local to call and answer your questions. And to your point, the state has a lot of obligations. It's sometimes hard to reach somebody directly. Plymouth County is here to be responsive. We've got a number of exciting programs. I know that Kim, as your Advisory Board representative, is on top of those. We've just announced a mobile integrated health program, which I'd love to come and talk about at another time. We're considering other requests from our communities for regional projects, so we really know that we can be that resource for our communities here in Plymouth County.
Excellent.
Are there any other questions about this or anything county-related? You've got the Treasurer here, so I can answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? No?
So if it's okay with you, could we do a picture right in the front? Can I ask you to come around and we'll do a little photo. I'm forward to not trying to squeeze behind the desk.
Do you mind if we also bring the Treasurer up? If you want to talk to you?
Who's taking the picture, Chief?
I don't know. Who's taking the picture? I don't know. Somebody? I'll just stand here. Thanks.
You might need his picture a few months.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, of course.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Receiving money is a great way to start our meeting.
You do know.
All right. Moving on, our next appointment is to authorize a letter of support to the EEA for the Housing Production and Housing Needs Assessment Plan. Our town planner Valerie Massard is seeking a letter of support from the board to be signed by the Chair to the EEA for the Housing Production Housing Needs Assessment Plan update, which requires a letter of support from the chief elected official. A drafted letter for the Chair's signature. There's a 25% match, which we've met through the Housing Trust and Planning Board, public benefits funds, and the grant request will be for $44,250. And we have our town planner right here. Valerie.
Well, you said it all, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure what I could add, other than, you know, this is an update from a plan that we lasted in 2019. It needs to be updated to help us stay in front of 40Bs if we're able, and it's really important for us to be looking at the needs in our community for housing and to see how we might be able to close the gap and provide housing choices for people that live here. So with that, I turn it back to any of the board.
Any questions? No? Keith, do you have anything to add?
No, just glad Valerie brought that up. Like she said, this having, applying for this grant and updating our plan will allow us to be as competitive as we can be in seeking additional housing opportunities in the future, so, good stuff.
All right. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen to support the Kingston Housing Needs Assessment and Production Plan Update.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous.
Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you. All right. Our next item is not receiving, but trying to get some free money to the town, just like this one. A grant application authorization for the Police Department. Chief Holmes is looking for the board's authorization for two grant applications. One is for the Department of Mental Health clinician position, the others for federal funding for the COPS grants from the US DOJ. Chief, would you like to add anything?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Honorable Members, Ms. Tucker, Mr. Hickey. I need a green light on this because it would involve shared expenses if we take on a full-time employee in both cases. One is a Department of Mental Health grant for a co-response clinician who would become a full-time employee of the Kingston Police Department. The costs associated with that would be the benefits through health insurance for a full-time equivalent, and likewise, if we get any funding from the US Department of Justice for a COPS grant, typically they're a three-year grant, so you would have to build it into your budget on year four. Sometimes it's a partial grant. If I get any headway of progress in either case, I would keep the board informed. So it's authorization to apply for two different grants.
Yeah. Chief, if you could, just for everybody's, including mine, just timing-wise, you apply for the grant tomorrow, for example. When would these grants be awarded, and when do you see the town having to start contributing towards the town's share of the cost of these new employees?
So the application process for the Department of Mental Health should take four to six weeks, and then you usually hear within another four to six weeks. So you're looking at as much as 12 weeks before the funding becomes available. You have to have a job description, and then you'd advertise for a clinician. It also involves the grant, if awarded, you end up taking on a full-time employee, but you also have money to get contractual services for administrative medical oversight for the clinician. So I would imagine at the earliest three months for the clinician position, and then the feds, that rotates all the time. That's a longer process, there's a lot more data that they're looking for, so I'd say it'd probably be, I mean, we just missed the opportunity for one right after I came through the door. They come and go really quickly, but I would imagine a minimum of three months before we hear anything from the completion of the application.
I do have a question about the mental health clinician. How long, is that fully funded for that position and for how long?
It's indefinite. I spoke to the coordinator, Joanne Barrows, she works with the DMH, and she said that they just put in a request to have the grant extended for a period of 10 years because they're popping up all over the place. The people are having a co-response model, working with their departments. There were four towns that got together as a shared resource recently. Something happened administratively with the position and it's vacant. So just to be transparent with everybody, this would be a shared resource with any partner, a town that wants to partner with us, but that's strongly encouraged in the model with the Department of Mental Health. They want to see the shared resource, if it's something that we can do and if it's needed in a smaller community or bordering community.
So it wouldn't necessarily fund it full-time just for us? It would be shared with other towns?
It would.
Yeah, okay. Anybody have any questions? Kim?
If the town had to absorb the cost at some point, are we talking like a somewhere between $60,000 and $100,000 employee?
Yes. So, the one that recently dissolved ended up in another community in Norfolk County, and I think they're in the neighborhood of about $80,000. I mean, you don't want to, you want to make it so that it's something that will catch a qualified person's attention without breaking the bank.
I see an average of about 70, so that's why I gave a range. One other question, where would this person sit, given the space constraints of the police station?
It's a great question. We do have some opiate lawsuit settlement money, so we'd likely be leasing portable office space like a trailer that would be to the left side of the station.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I just ask a question about the DOJ funding? Is that, that's going to be for a new position for an officer? Will that not affect the lieutenants, funding-wise?
No.
I'm just asking for clarification for a vote, really?
Yes, it's, it would be funding a patrol officer's position, so a lot of those initiatives are community-oriented policing, and it would be a patrol officer.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could, Mr. Chair, and I think, I just ask you, Chief, just to confirm this. I've dealt with these, or been associated with these COPS grants in the past. Typically, it's a three-year funding, 75%, I believe, of the cost of an officer, and then year four, the town would then absorb that cost. So it's, you know, it's allowing the Police Department to grow, police officer-wise, if people think that's appropriate, and it pays 75% of the cost associated with that person for three years. So it's a, if you know you need the police officer, whether it be today or three years from now, it's a great opportunity to have a lot of that cost supplemented by the federal government. It's a really good program.
Quick question. Covering 75%, does that include overtime, or is the overtime then covered by the town?
It's covered by, the overtime would be covered by the town. The 75% is exclusively for base salary.
Yeah.
The one that I looked at, that it expired June 4th, another one popped up for June 15th. These come and go, but I mean, I thought it would be good practice to come and get a green light, again, because of shared expenses for any future COPS grants. But 75% is what I saw on the one that expired June 4th, and the town will be on the hook for obviously the benefits and all that, and it does not cover overtime.
Okay.
So again, if the board is interested in applying for this, respectfully understand, if we're fortunate enough to be awarded this grant, we would have to be going to a fall town meeting looking for some additional funding in some manner to address the 25% salary, cost share, and the benefits as well. So that's, that's the responsibility that the community would have to consider absorbing if this was successfully received.
Kim?
Given the budget constraints that we're about to face this year, that's my only hesitation, is adding anything. I think this is a great program, I support it in theory. This year, it's really hard for me to add anything, knowing that we're going to be pushing up against the levy limit and looking at potentially an override that we discussed at town meeting. So I guess I'm hesitant to add anything, especially at this early in the budgeting season.
How fast would we get a answer on that and be on the hook for the 25%?
It's federal, it's slow, and I believe, anybody in the room who can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe at some point, there has to be a document signed for the acceptance of the funds. Are you familiar with that? So if I go through the process, however long it takes, and we're just not in a position to take it, it might jeopardize future opportunities if we were to turn it down, but it'd be nice to have that option to figure out, how do we get the funding, when, where? Is that accurate, Keith?
Yeah, the board, the board would ultimately accept, accept the grant, to your point, Chief, and have the ability at that point to refuse it, but I completely agree with what the Chief mentioned, that we may not look as favorable as a community in the future if we've applied, been successful, and then turned the grant down.
I guess as a follow-up, would you be better off waiting a year? I don't know.
Also, do we have clear lines on when we have to accept? Does that have to be accepted? How long do we have, I guess, is the question?
I don't know.
Yeah. There's some flexibility, I think, in when the grant is spent, so, and I, you could double-check, Chief, but I, you know, again, let's just play this out a little bit. We find out September 30th that we're awarded a COPS grant, you know, can we wait nine months to fund that position for July 1st start? I don't know if you can wait nine months. There might be some wiggle room there, but, but I'm not sure you've got nine months to do it. So you're gonna, you're gonna, I think, you're gonna hear and have the ability to make a decision to include or not include the costs on a fall town meeting warrant prior, you know, prior to having fall town meeting take place. So, I guess in my mind, you're gonna be looking at having to make a decision sometime end of the summer, potentially for, for this grant application.
I guess my concern is if we don't go for the grant, I have a, I have a very strong feeling we're going to be talking about adding a patrol officer to the spring town meeting anyways, and obviously that's up to the, I mean, in fall and spring, it's up to the voting members of the town. So my, my thoughts are if we don't go for the grant, it doesn't go on the warrant for fall town meeting, we're going to be looking at the same issue in the spring without the option of potentially getting a grant.
But wouldn't that be separate? Are we looking, are you saying we would be adding a patrol officer in addition to the mental health clinician?
My understanding, no, no, I'm saying from my understanding is we're going to, you can opine on this, Chief, if you like, but is to get the department up to speed on a few, you know, a few more patrol officers coming up in the future. So if we say no to the, to the grant...
To the mental health clinician?
No. You're talking about the COPS, these are two different grants, so the...
I'm talking about the DOJ.
Yeah, the DOJ COPS one is specifically for patrol.
I'm talking about the DOJ grant specifically.
Okay.
Specifically that because, you know, I'm thinking, I'm just playing it, I'm trying to role-play it out and say, we don't go for that grant, it's gonna, there's a very good chance, I'm looking at the person who's probably going to be coming to us about that, that spring town meeting's going to come back up, and we're going to be looking for one to two more officers.
I see.
You know, and we may, we may have missed our chance to get a, you know, a good budgetary deal out of this, you know, out of it as well, if we don't go for it. So, I see both sides to it. I, I lean in towards going for the grant because we're going to be, we're going to be met with an inevitable growth of the department as it is if we could take three years of funding at 75%.
My apologies, I was confused. I thought we were looking at one item, so.
Could I comment?
Yeah, so I just think about that as a net benefit, obviously.
If I could comment, the federal fiscal year, I think, ends in October or November, October. I could be coming back to you in three weeks, two weeks, and say, there's nothing out there. COPS grants have dried up for the year. I could be coming back in two to three weeks if given a green light, hypothetically saying, I found this one, it's 75% for three years, or I found one that's fully funded for two, I don't know. But they come and go, but if I, you know, if I end up having the option to apply, I could bring back something more palatable, I guess.
You just, I feel like I've confused everyone, or at least confused myself. The mental health clinician grant was fully funded.
Yes.
And we don't know when that would end. The three-year 75% was the patrolman grant.
Yes.
Okay.
So the DMH one, I put in the number, hypothetically, let's just call it 100, could be more, could be less, but the 100 would fund the full-time position, and then some of it would be used to partner with a place for administrative oversight, somebody who has the know-how and expertise to oversee a mental health clinician. So, there's two parts, but that's a state-funded grant through the Massachusetts Department of Mental Health.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? No? Would, would anyone like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen authorize the police chief to apply for the grants, Department of Mental Health clinician position, and the federal funding for the COPS grants, US DOJ. Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that was unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, now we're on to spending money. We've received money, we're asking for money, and now we're, we're looking to spend money. So our next appointment is on the discussion on establishing a Public Safety Building Committee for the Pembroke Street Police and Fire Station Expansion. Town Administrator, Fire Chief, and Police Chief are requesting that we create a committee or working group to continue the planning to construct a proposed police station and central fire station expansion right there on Pembroke Street. Staffs recommending that the committee include the police and fire chiefs, town administrator, building inspector, one selectman, and one finance committee member. Keith, do you want to, do you have some additional information you want to speak about?
Very briefly, we, we continue to have conversations, when I say we, I guess I'll focus, Chief Douglas has continued to have ongoing conversations with Eversource, who has not yet indicated to us definitively that they're going to provide us the land needed to construct a police station on an abutting piece of property from the central fire station on Pembroke Street. One of the challenges we have frankly is trying to specifically identify how much land we need, and with that, or for that, we need to have, you know, an architect, architect, ar- architect, thank you, big word, and/or engineer help us with citing the said station and all of the necessary supporting infrastructure to support the Police Department, which is fair, as far as Eversource goes. So, we've been, we've been on hold. The previous police building committee met two or three times a year and a half ago, give or take, a year, year and a half ago. I apologize for the, for the, not knowing exactly when they met, and we talked about that, and we frankly said, let's just hold off on, on meeting again until we get a better sense of where we're going to put, where we think we can put this. We're, I think, more hopeful than we were a year ago that Eversource is going to want to work with us, but we need to provide that information to try to make this project move as quickly as it, as it, as we'd like it to, while still being thorough. You know, trying to have staff with one FinCom member and one Board of Selectmen member will allow us to maybe have a little more capability of meeting more often and/or more frequently, and allow the people who are the experts on building, on, and on operating a police and a fire department, have a significant role in, in, in bringing something forward. I reached out to Ms. McFarland, who was the chairman of the previous committee earlier this afternoon, or late this afternoon, let her know this conversation was going to occur, so out of courtesy, she wouldn't be surprised. I'm assuming that's why she and Mr. Kazner are here, but I'm not, I can't be positive. I'm sorry? I said something, I couldn't hear you, Joe. Okay. So, what's that? I know you are. I said that. So we're asking the board to, to appoint the committee that we've suggested moving forward, so we can try to bring forward a proposal to the voters and to the Board of Selectmen as quickly as possible.
So I have a question. What about someone from Capitol Planning?
Sure. You know, it's a great point. I don't know if we even talked about that, but it's certainly appropriate. Sure.
Okay.
You have six, you have six now on the recommended, recommended list? If I would make seven, so you don't have to vote on anything.
Sure. Again... to appoint the committee that we've suggested moving forward, so we can try to bring forward a a proposal to the voters and to the Board of Selectmen as quickly as possible.
So I I have a question. What about someone from capital planning?
Sure. You know, it's a great point. I I don't know if we even talked about that, but it's certainly appropriate. Sure.
Okay.
You have six, you have six now on the recommenda- recommended list, so that would make seven. So you have to vote on anything.
Um, again.
Either that or planning board, I mean, but.
See, I don't think the planning board's gonna have any role here, really.
I think Cap- I think capital makes more sense.
Capital makes sense. We've got the building commissioner, you know, a FinCom member and a a Board of Selectmen member, we're suggesting, you know, we also have, you know, we can grab Valerie and get her opinions whenever it's appropriate, so she'd be a resource for us as well.
I would love to be part of it if it's available, or if someone's looking for a selectman for it.
The other thing is any of us could go to the meeting if more than two of us were going to a meeting, that we would need to just post.
Yeah.
You know, so that we could go. My understanding is that we could go, even if we didn't post a meeting, you could have three members there, but then they couldn't participate, correct? Just the one member who would be part of that.
I'd wanted to, I believe that's true.
We can just double check with Kate.
I'd wanna be safe and.
Best practice is just post.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's right.
That's fine. I wasn't going to volunteer, so.
Joe, you have a question?
May I ask you to just come down?
Mm-hmm.
The police station building committee was formed nine or 10 years ago on the recommendation of the permanent building committee, which we had at that time, who was very clear in saying that the police, the current police station was falling apart, and we shouldn't put any more money into trying to repair it. The police station building committee looked at sites all around. We heard maybe four years ago about this possibility of a grant or a gift of land from EverSource. That was all discussed. What we designed and what we have on the drawing board at this time is a police station that was designed with the participation of all the committee members and the police chief. I think he's Sergeant Lanatra, and Chief Albergini from the fire department. We had building people, we had an architect on it, we had hired an architect. There are plans currently for a new police station on the existing site. We considered that to be the best possibility because, number one, no land cost, and number two, no site impact. That was never brought forward before town meeting. What needs to be done now to complete that, and what I would encourage you to do, is to at least get a price to build that, a current price. We were under $10 million at that time. We had the support of former treasurer, because I spoke to him. We we just, it never went before town meeting, but it's all there, it's all ready to go. And Chief Splain, well, it was said to me by Chief Robello, that Chief Splain's approach would be a very conservative approach. And that showed, that poured through in in all the design. We don't need this, but we do need that, and it was the architectural drawings are all done. And to not at least look at that and start down the road with a maybe piece of land? I I just don't know why you would wanna do that. That's all I wanted to say. Any questions?
Any questions?
I think my response to that would be, I don't think anybody on this board or in the administration is looking to get rid or scrap plans, I think. But I think it is important, that's something that had been done by a committee a number of years ago, to be looked at with just like you would look at any other plans that were built five years ago, four years ago, 10 years ago. Maybe that is the starting point. Maybe it is the finished plan. Maybe it's not.
They're not that old.
Sure, but regardless of that.
And the advantage is, it's on the exact same site. No new site impact, no, nobody complaining.
I don't know where, I guess I would say that the, my understanding is, nobody in this, nobody here would wanna rebuild re, uh, what is it, reinvent the wheel if we don't need to, but it needs to be looked at, of course, by new chief. Two new chiefs, new building inspector. I mean, just, I think I think that makes sense in respect going forward, to bring in the people, the stakeholders that are that are gonna be running these things.
We had the building inspector on the committee at that time.
The former building inspector, Joe, understandable, and they're all fantastic, wonderful people, and I know all of them. Paul Armstrong is one of the best people I've ever met. You guys are all fantastic. This is all good. There's no, I don't, I don't see a lot of adversity other than the fact that they should take a clean look at that plan, just like anything else. If I if I had a house design or a pool designed five years ago, I would, if I had a pool designed five years ago, and I said, you know what, I don't have, I don't have the money for that right now. And I went back to you, Joe, and I said, you designed an incredible pool for me. I'd go, what's the cost five years later? And you'd go, well, you know, after the pandemic, this and that, concrete, rebar, blah, 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 blah. We're up at about $3 million. So maybe, maybe to look at it and to go, that pool, I might scale it back a little bit. I might build an above-ground pool. I might be able to build a kiddie pool. We don't want a kiddie pool for a police station, but I think what, I think the whole idea is.
Maybe you'll share a pool with your neighbor.
Yeah, yeah, maybe you'll share a pool with your neighbor. It's, I I think it's building upon the foundations that you all already have have set. Taking those components and seeing where they still fit. I think that's the, that's the goal of the board and the thing that I won't be on, but I'm speaking to. Is that I think everybody just wants to take the pieces of the pie, let's see, let's see what fits, because we've got new eyes in here, we've got new chief, we've got new building inspector. And this is a public, the best part about these these things, this is public. People get to go to this.
Yeah.
People that were a part of it got to get to go to it. I plan going to it, even though I'm not going to be on it. This is, this is gonna be a community input moment for everybody to be able to come together, build something that's extremely important, that hopefully lasts longer than my lifetime. So we wanna rebuild it again and come up with the best plan possible. That's my view.
Well, then I would encourage you, if at all possible, and not me, but try to put a few members of the former police station building committee on the new committee. They understand the plan, they understand the reasons why, and they may be able to add an awful lot to these discussions. So that's, if you could get Morris to do it, that might be a great idea. But if you could find somebody from the former committee, and again, not me, I've got plenty to do, Ty. So I'd ask you to at least consider that, because there are a lot of good people there, it's like you said, and I agree with you. But on the same token, they went through all the steps. They know all the reasons why. And they also know the advantage to the plan that we came out with in the end. Who better to represent it than to someone who participated in its conception? That would be what I would say to you. So when you're formulating this committee, I would hope that you could at least find a seat or two on the committee and include someone from the previous building committee who put all their time into it. Fair enough?
We're at seven now, right?
Yeah, we are at seven.
Could we add an ex officio member?
How many do we have, Sandy?
Nine.
That's what I thought. We had nine.
Could you add an ex officio member, so you have someone who's like a non-voting, but a participant in the conversation? It's kind of a hybrid. So it achieves the recommendation from the administration, but also gives them the voice at the table.
You can do whatever we want.
Within the scope of the law.
We had several good people on that, and if you have a list of those people in front of you, you might reach out to a couple of them and see if they'd be in. And I'm sure that there'd be a few who would, and I certainly can see the advantage, so.
So what we could do, Keith, correct? Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, one difference between how I think we're gonna appoint this committee and the way that it was appointed before is this committee's gonna be appointed by title first, not by name. So originally, the the police station building committee was appointed by, you know, it said Joe Kazna, it said Sandy McFarland, it said the people that were assigned. I think this time we'll say the town administrator, a member of finance committee, a member of, and then finance committee will decide who that representative is, right? And then we appoint it?
And I think the reality is if somebody doesn't run or is no longer a part of that seat, their membership is void, just like mine would be on the housing commit- committee, or any other subcommittee that we become a part of. Like, I wouldn't have stayed on as, on the police search committee if I was no longer a selectman.
Right.
So it wasn't the person that should have been appointed.
My, my point was just that if if we did choose to have an ex officio member or something at the table, then the former police station, the existing police station building committee could then decide amongst themselves who they wanted to volunteer for that, and then we could potentially appoint it.
What what I was thinking is we we could potentially, this is just an idea, we could potentially add two more spots. One could be just someone from the public that would have to apply, and then we would appoint, if we think that's important.
I'm just worried about it getting too big.
Nine's huge.
Well, that's what we were saying. I mean, we're at seven, so we're talking about going to eight.
An eighth, non-voting member.
Right. Oh, I see what you're saying, non-voting.
But that has pervy, that's that's pervy to the discussion, but not a non-voting member.
Just like the town administrator and the treasurer, capital planning.
If you have eight, with one being a non-voting member.
We're at seven. And four.
Okay, so four is a quorum.
Just like finance committee.
Eric, we had nine, and it worked out pretty well.
Yeah.
And again, I I've made my argument. I, okay. I hope you'll consider it. Thank you all very much.
First of all, I have to apologize for coming up here with only one shoe. It broke as I was coming in.
I thought you were gonna throw it.
No, no, no. I'm not letting you. As much as I appreciate the call at 5 o'clock this afternoon telling me that my committee was gonna be dismanted, I mean disbanded, I wish that I had had earlier notification, and I can guarantee you that my other eight committee members are gonna be extremely disappointed. It was a very enthusiastic group. We did an awful lot of work. We only lost the first vote by four. And going forward, we were pushed aside at each town meeting for something that the town thought was bigger and perhaps rightfully so. But being pushed aside was not the committee's fault. And if that's what you so decide to do, that's that's it. I want to apologize to my committee that they were not informed. I couldn't get to everybody by five, you know, at 5 o'clock. But I do hope that you do send something to them, notifying them that the committee doesn't exist anymore. And if you do have something like a citizen at large, you know, I should, I can assure you that any one of my members would be glad to be on that committee, and I wish you luck. And I love the new chief. I I met him this afternoon and had a grand talk with him.
Did he draw you a picture at all, Sandy? He likes to, he likes to draw, to illustrate, so I wasn't sure if he was, if you were lucky enough to have that opportunity with him, no?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to point out, the motion for our consideration this evening does not discuss dissolving the prior committee. It talks about forming a public safety committee, so if if the board should choose to dissolve the prior committee, I think that would have to be at a future meeting. Anyway, just based on, I don't, I don't know if you guys agree, but it's not really the agenda item.
Right. Any other thoughts in terms of, I'm okay with going to nine, I'm okay with doing the seven plus a non-voting. If if anybody wants to discuss this further, or if someone wants to make a motion?
I I like the, I mean, I like the seven with a with a with an eighth person that could be put forth from from the previous committee to have input, but a non-voting member. I think, I think we're doing similarly what we've done, what was done before, just people are in different roles now. And so we want the people that have the stake, the stakeholders in those roles right now to be able to have the voice in it. And so I think having seven allows them to have a quorum of four, and then having a a member at large, that's somebody that could at least go speak to the prior committee or the still committee, or wherever you, or the public, and be able to have that voice, I think, would make a lot of sense.
Let me take a stab at it?
Sure.
I move to appoint a public safety building committee for the purpose of recommending a location, design, and proposed cost for a new police station and central fire station expansion. Committee members to include the police chief, fire chief, town administrator, building inspector, one selectman, one finance commen- committee member, and one capital planning committee member, as well as one ex officio member from the prior police station building committee. And further, to appoint Don Alkenbry as the representative, nope?
Friendly amendment, I think you have to, you should probably mention something about that eighth seat.
I said ex officio.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So and further, to appoint Don Alkenbry as the selectman representative on said committee. Does that work?
Second? All right, any discussion before we vote? Are we good? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nope, abstain. We're good. So that was unanimous, so thank you. All right, and do we know when that that working group is going to, or committee is going to start?
So the FinCom, the finance committee is meeting before the 15th, I wanna say around the 10th or 11th of July. They don't have an exact date yet. I'd ask the, I would ask the the finance committee chair and also ask the capital planning committee chair if they need to hold a meeting to appoint a representative, that they do that as quickly as possible. And then we'll sit down as a group and and come up with a game plan on how to move forward. From there.
All right, our next appointment tonight is to appoint a tax title custodian. Town administrators requesting that selectmen appoint a tax title custodian to begin to address the significant and growing receivable. Historically, the treasurer has been appointed to the position. Current collector, treasurer, Ken Moally is willing to be appointed. But we were also contacted by Jim Franklin, who is interested and willing to serve in the position. So Keith, do you wanna introduce this any further before we open it up to? I think what what we should do is open it up so both gentlemen could speak to us and answer questions, make a statement.
Sure. You know, I I don't think I really have anything more to add than than what you've just mentioned. We, I just wanna get started with trying to address the the tax title situation. It is, and Carol McCoy's here, I think, for this as well, virtually, but, you know, with with, we talk about a police and fire station. Along with that comes bonding, along with that comes bond ratings. And one of the things that a bond rating agency will look at is outstanding outstanding property taxes and the process we're using to try to collect those. So I think over the next year or so, there'll be a lot of things that we're trying to do financially to try to make sure that the town of Kingston's in as strong a financial situation as we can to either maintain or potentially improve our bond rating. So that was the reason for wanting to get started with the tax title custodian getting it, getting it appointed and trying to get that moving.
And just to be clear, we do have a chart that reflects a historical outstanding balance on unpaid property taxes, and I do not have my glasses. I don't wear glasses, but I think I need them. It's significantly high. I think, yeah, back in 2010, we were at about $1 million if I'm reading that correctly. And now we're at about $2.5 million, but the line just kinda goes up over the years.
Not going the right way.
Pretty steady, not the right way.
Can I add something just based on, so?
Please.
I don't even remember how long ago this was that we discussed this last, but the prior treasurer came before our board, different, different membership at the time, but came before our board and was proposing an auction. There was discussion about some of the properties perhaps having some interest to keep from different departments, and there was discussion, our meeting, extensive discussion in several meetings. And then ultimately, the board, a member of the board moved to not have the auction, which was supported, I believe, by three of the five members, if I'm remembering that correctly. So at the time, the concern was there were still properties that there may be an interest in keeping for the benefit of the town, and there wasn't clarity as to whether or not we really wanted to get rid of everything. So that brings us to now. So the former treasurer resigned from the role of tax title custodian and left us with just accumulating these tax title properties.
So I mean, if I could just expand upon that, I think, and I don't wanna speak for Mr. Mr. Pike. He was trying to address a, an issue that had been not brought forward and not worked on for a while. Looking to bring an auction forward and to do that and to be successful with an auction and to entice an auctioneer to even want to participate on behalf of the town. There's got to be some properties that have some value there. It can't just be, you know, quarter acre, quarter acre lots that, that don't have a lot of value and won't attract people to come in and buy those. So I think, you know, Mr. Pike was trying to deal with everything as a group to try to entice that type of an auctioneer. He did try to work with departments to some degree on when, when concerns were raised about this may have a conservation value, it may have a recreation value, it may have. We had the Affordable Housing Trust, I think, at one point show, indicate that they may, may have some interest in some of the properties and, and so things got really bogged down. And ultimately, I think the board just decided to take, to take a step back. And I think Carl had become frustrated with the process. And again, I don't mean to speak, speak for him. One of the things that I've done to prepare for tonight was to, you know, the, the concern, I think, that was raised in the past was the tax title custodian has the complete control over what property gets sent to auction and what doesn't. I called council today to find out from their point of view and to make sure, and when I'm trying to describe this, I'm describing it accurately. I, I don't think that's the case at all. One of the, but one of, what council had said to me was that a, a community that they also represent, I think it's Rehoboth, had brought forward a bylaw on the appropriate process for a tax titled property to be disposed of, which would, which would require in this, in that case, or requires in Rehoboth's case, and I think it makes some sense here, is a check and balance to have the board of selectmen approve whatever properties the tax title custodian is looking to sell or auction off. The challenge we have frankly is where we we own the business of owning property. I think when there's, when there's some value to property, whether for whatever purpose the different departments or boards or commissions feel the need to want to keep those, they should be looked at and considered seriously. That being said, you know, I think we, we also, as I just mentioned, we don't want to get into the, in my mind anyways, into the business of owning a tremendous amount of property we don't need. So my goal was to bring this forward. I didn't expect frankly, and I wasn't here last week, to see it, to determine whether or not there's anybody else who was interested. Historically, it's been the, the treasurer. And, and it's been the treasurer, I think, in the past, and I think it typically is in, in most Massachusetts communities to, so he can, he has access, or the collector has acts, treasurer, excuse me, has access to tax title custodians, tax title attorneys, to tax records and our financial software, to other town depart, town department employees. I appreciate the fact Mr. Franklin is interested in being appointed a tax title custodian. We don't have enough volunteers townwide, so it's, it's tough to say that I'd ask the board not to appoint somebody as a volunteer to do this, because it's just, it's a, it's a very, very important position and responsibility to, to keep this town in, in as strong a financial position as we can have it in. I certainly understand and agree with the suggestion that was made that a, a specific process be adopted. Council said that could be either adopted in a bylaw that is approved at a town meeting or just be a board of selectmen policy. Either one would work. The tax title custodian works at the, is appointed by and, and, and can be, can be removed from that position whenever the board of selectmen feel as though the, the position's not being adequately represented. So it's a board decision. Mr. Moally and, and I apologize. Mr. Franklin, I apologize, are here this evening to, to address the board and ask any questions. I'm not sure, is there a question for me, sir? Yeah, okay. So that's where I'm at. Thank you.
So I think what we should do now, if there's no objection, let both of them speak, make a statement, and we can ask questions, and then we'll go from there. And Ken, our current treasurer and collector, if you want to go first? If you have a statement or if you just want, want to answer questions, because we did get a, a letter from you.
Brief statement.
Sure.
Just real briefly. I am not looking at this as property at all. I'm looking at this as a receivable. This is a very large number that we need to get off our books. Now, how we get that number off our books? We could sell the property. We could take the property as town-owned, and that would reduce the number. My goal is nothing but financial here. I don't care where this property goes, just so long as it gets off the books. We need, we just discussed a new safety, public safety building. That's going to be a lot of money. The difference in our interest rates will be great if we have a bad credit rating or we have our current credit rating versus the credit rating that I want to achieve, which is a triple A credit rating. Okay? We can't do that with two and a half million dollars sitting on the books. That's just plain and simple. So.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. If there is, if there is a way that we can lower that, this is how. That's one piece of this project that I'm working on for the next two years. So it's, I will work at your pleasure. But I know that our tax title attorney has worked in this, in that business for 30 years. He's never seen a community take someone from outside of the treasurer's office to do their tax title custodial work. All right? It's just very irregular to do. So I have no agenda here, other than to reduce the receivable that we have. That's it. So if you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
And any questions from the board?
If you, if we appointed you tonight and you get started on as tax title custodian tomorrow, what would that look like for you? Like, how do you achieve your goal of getting these off of?
Well, we currently have a property that we've recently foreclosed on. A tax title custodian is that person that goes and locks it up and makes sure that it's not a hazard. Tax title custodian is one that reports that to our insurance company, because that's our property now. And if someone gets hurt on that property, then it's our fault.
Sorry, I understand the scope of what a tax title custodian does. I'm wondering how you would achieve your goal.
Well, those are the things that I would do. I would start doing the things that a tax title custodian has to do that we haven't done in a year, or a little bit less than a year maybe. So.
And would you recommend a policy, a bylaw to put together that, to define what that process is?
Well, so the, the tax title process is not broken. The tax title process is, is the tax title process. We're talking about two different things here, okay? Apples and oranges. What we're talking about was a frustration within the board and the former tax title custodian where he tried to bring properties forward for auction. And there was a dispute as to which properties were auctionable and which weren't. And that's not, I mean, although it's a concern of mine, I don't think that should be the crux of what you're discussing right now. It, it, it's part of the discussion, it's part of the job. But not all of tax title custodian is auctioning off properties. That's not the whole job. So it, the way I'm looking at it is not the way it should be, you know, it's not the way you folks are discussing it right now. I, and so I'm, I'm kind of at a loss as to how to explain the importance of what it is. It's more than just an auction.
So you have some land at, at, at an intersection that's right next to a commercial property that could be, it could be developed? It could be purchased, it could be, it could go to auction, somebody could build condos there, you know, I mean, anything can happen. So with something like that, do we then, you know, have a public hearing for that property before doing it, letting, letting neighbors have input? You know, and, and how does that, how is that decision made? You know, do we, do we put it out to auction? Do we, do we get that land, take that land and use it for some other purpose?
Right. So those are things, those are things that we can discuss down the line. That's, again, I have to repeat, this is, that's not why I'm doing this. That's part of what the job is. And I work at your leisure, at your pleasure. So if we come across a property that is, you know, in tax title, that we move to foreclosure, which we can't do anything until we move it to foreclosure. Once we move that property to foreclosure, then we have to wait a one-year redemption period. If that taxpayer doesn't redeem in that one year, then we can go to auction. We have so many foreclosed properties that we can put in auction right now. So tax title doesn't necessarily mean it's auctionable right away. It still needs to go through some of the, the, the greater process. So what I'm looking to do immediately is the low hanging fruit. Are those properties that are real property? That have, that are improved by buildings? You know, we have some of those. And the best way to do that is to send a strongly worded letter from our attorney saying, "We are planning to foreclose on your property, and this is the process, and we're going to start now if you don't pay your taxes." Nine out of 10 times, my colleagues from around the state say nine out of 10 times, you will get your tax money within 60 days. That's my goal.
Yeah, go ahead.
So as one of the people who would have voted in favor of having an auction at the time, had I been given the opportunity, I voted, it sounds strange to say it this way, I voted against not having an auction.
Right.
The reason I asked what you would do, like, how would you get started? Is because you keep saying you serve the pleasure of the board, which is what the law actually says. So I appreciate that. But how? How do you determine what the pleasure of the board is? There clearly was a split board before.
Right.
So how do you figure that out? How do you get it done? How do you get to the end result? Like, I'm trying to understand.
All right, so I understand your question. What I would do is I would get that, go back to that list, that, the infamous list. Go back to that list. I would work with the other departments. What do you feel? What do you think? What do you know? What do you see? Okay? A lot of these properties are just simple little cut corners, like 250 square feet in tall timbers next to someone's yard that they could put a swing set on. They might want to pay the extra $10 a year, so auction it off. You know, they might, they might buy it. If they don't, we keep it. But I would come to the board, just like Carl did, and say, "These are the properties." And at that point, I would hope that I had done my job and vetted these properties through Collins Com, building, zoning, you know, all the, all the stakeholders, you know? And I would have probably, at that point, exhausted every opportunity to get in touch with the owner. Great example. I got a, I got a email from our tax title attorney today. "The Anderson family that used to own property up on Wapping Road had some property on Ring Road years ago. They're long since dead. We've gone through three sets of heirs. We've found the very last heir to that property who has no interest in it. It's a landlocked piece of property off of Ring Road that is useless to anybody. Even the people that have bought it, it's useless, wetlands. So what do we do with it? I come to you folks." Now, I asked him, "Would you give us the deed in lieu of foreclosure?" That would solve, solve a ton of problems, you know? That's a really big, so it's, those are the things that if you're in-house, able to do. You know, we have conversations back and forth with the tax title attorney, where you're, you have access to all of our records, to our, you know, our, our archive records, things like that. And then this isn't even getting into the, you know, the recent SJC ruling on Tyler versus Hennepin County in Minnesota or Springfield versus Mills, Mills in Massachusetts. It's called theft, equity theft, and it's the newest, it's the newest thing about tax title foreclosure. So you, and that ties directly with the treasurer. So if we did sell a property, there is excess equity, if there is excess equity, it's up to the treasurer to, to maintain those funds in a separate account. I already maintain all those other accounts and all that other, all that other special money. It's just, it's a, it's a natural transition. And again, I was recently at a, an event down on Cape Cod for mass treasurer collectors, and it, I asked a lot of my colleagues, and most of them said it's highly irregular to have someone outside of the treasurer's office handle this. So I think I've made a compelling discussion here.
Any other questions?
I was just going to mention, it doesn't say in the law it needs to be, though.
Right.
It may be highly irregular, but it's not illegal.
No, no, it's not illegal. It's, it's just highly irregular.
Understood.
All right. I'd say we're good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moally. Mr. Franklin? Thank you for coming.
Hello, Jim Franklin, 53, Waltham Street, Kingston. I was around for the last process. I wasn't impressed by it. I thought that there was some personal feelings on why some parcels should go on there. And if it was a cleaner par, process, we could have avoided it. We could have returned those parcels to the tax roll last year, and we could have been seeing revenue right now. Okay? So me coming in as just an independent, third-party custodian candidate is to offer you guys somebody who is responsible to you outside of what we have in the dual role as it stands as collector and treasurer. I sent you an email. I'm sure you've all read it. There's a very limited scope in, in chapter 60, 77B. Basically, it says that you may appoint a custodian. It's not that you shall, you don't have to. You guys can take this responsibility on yourself. If you decide to bring in a custodian, you can bring in whoever you want to help facilitate what your goals are here. Okay? What Keith said was 100% accurate. I don't disagree with any of it. I believe that these parcels should have been returned, and they should have been returned last year so that we could be seeing some revenue from them now. We could have used that money for something else. We're raising taxes as it is. I'm not for that. What I'm not for is that the way that this is established and seems to exist now in Kingston is that we have one department that is overseeing all three. And I, and the treasurer is, is, is separate. Tax collector is separate. The treasurer is the one who will assign the deeds if it does go to auction. The custodian doesn't. The custodian just helps facilitate, doesn't push. He gets the input from you guys, does what needs to be done so that we bring it all to the, to the close that we all want to see. So it's very clear that, that Mr. Uh.
Moally.
Feels a certain way when it comes down to how this is supposed to be done. But some of the things that were said here tonight weren't accurate. Okay? It's not what he feels, it's not what the treasurer feels, it's not that the custodian is the one who's, who's going out and foreclosing. It's all on the treasurer. The treasurer department does all that work. What the custodian does is he reports to you, he gets involved, he, he, he does the, the actions that need to be done as they're assigned. And I think that that's an important distinction. Even if the, the purpose of me coming up here is just to bring that to your attention, you have to know that, one, it's at your pleasure, meaning that if, if, if you don't like the process, it doesn't move forward. Two, my recommendation is what Keith said. You need, you need a repeatable process moving forward. So look at it as a one-time opportunity. You guys can get the, the, the codification behind it. Come up with a repeatable process so that you don't ever have to worry about this again. The people of the town don't have to worry about this again. So I don't know if you have any questions, but I think my, my letter was summarized what my position was on this. So if you have any questions, please.
Can, just the same question I asked Ken is, how would you, if we appointed you tonight and you started tomorrow as tax title custodian, how would you figure out what the? how would you figure out what the pleasure of the board means? How would you start getting this done to get the properties back on the tax roll?
We're going to stipulate that I understand what you guys went through last, last year, right? I know the process. I know that there was a process. I know that there was a general consensus on what should have went back out to sale. So I think that my, my first move would be to speak with the TA and discuss what the, the pleasure of the board is. Do they want to move these out? Do they want to move this to auction? Yes, okay, if it's, if it's going to auction, then we go back down the list. Are all these going on the list? Hold any of the parcels that you want off that list and move the rest of them. We don't have to put everything that's on our receivables list back onto the rolls if, if the town wants them. So if Keith says that Planning Board wants this, or Conservation wants this, or the next, or the Housing Committee wants that, you guys can hold it. You don't have to move all of them, but you shouldn't keep most of them. So if you guys want to move forward with it, then I work with Keith, we, we get it, get involved. I'm going to have to work with the treasurer. The treasurer is the one who's going to have to do all the paperwork. He signs the deeds, you guys sign with him. It's not a tax title custodian action. So I'm not reaching out, I'm not foreclosing, I'm not doing any of that. That's, that's not in the role. The, the task is simply to be the custodian for whatever task you guys ask for, so. That, I ask you a question, Ken?
It does. Can I ask for more?
Yep, please.
You mentioned conservation. Do you see serving on the Conservation Commission as a conflict with this role?
I, I don't. I, I, I serve, again, at the pleasure on that commission because I was asked to serve. I work in the built community every day. I'm a construction manager, I'm a consultant. I help facilities, say, projects, right? That's my day job. I'm across the country all week long, setting up projects, executing projects. So when it comes down to, am I qualified to do the job? Yeah, I'm qualified to do jobs. Do I know how to talk to attorneys? Yes. Do I understand how the laws work? Yes. Can I read the laws? Can I read codes? Can I read regulations and come up with, with the, the list of the checkmarks? Yes, I can absolutely do that, so.
In following up to that, just watching quite a few conservation meetings, I'll say this lightly about conservation commissions throughout the state, they can be a little crazy. And you've, you've been one of those, and I, I think ours in Kingston is the best, so don't take it I said across the state, they can be a little crazy. But you've always brought a good balance of conservation and the, and the need to be able to move forward with projects. Because you understand both sides of those. And just working with you on a few of them throughout the town and watching other ones, you've had a very good, well-rounded view. I just, I just want to throw that out there as a position because, you know, I know you say it's a conflict, you probably see it maybe as a, as a add-on to a certain extent, but from my, from my dealings, from the meetings and conservation, seeing both sides of the coin, and that, that you work in both of those worlds on that level has been a really big benefit, so.
I, I think it's really important to, to see both sides if you're going to be asked to sit on something and educate, right? So when it comes down to, am I hard on some people sometimes when they should know better? Yeah, absolutely. I mean, some of the, I think it's made our department better. Bringing some of the, the house cleaning items up in front of everybody, just so that we can compel the engineers who are driving these submissions, compel them to, to bring a finished product as it comes. I, I think that helps us get to the point where most of our decisions are unanimous, and I, I think in the time that I've been on the board, there's only been maybe two or three projects that got denied. And I think that, that speaks well to the town and everybody on that board and in the department, so. I don't see it as a conflict. It's, I'm, I'm a stand-up reputable guy. I'm independent. You guys say, "Go here, I'm going there." I'm, I'm offering you an out-of-the-box solution to something that didn't go very well last, last, last year, and I think the town needs it to go well. So that's, that's the point here.
And would you suggest that we put together this, formalize a bylaw or just policies? Like, what's your view on that?
I agree 100%. I mean, some of the things that Keith said, it's almost like we could have wrote the same letter, but it, it's in my letter. This isn't me responding to what Keith said. This is, I believe 100% that if you have a repeatable list of, of action items and checkboxes, and you, and you codify that, and the town's behind it, or, or the board even appoints it, then you're going to ultimately achieve the intent, right? You guys are the representatives of the town. The people vote for you, and you vote for all the stuff that we don't want to track, right? So the responsibility is yours, and if you guys see fit, then, then I think that that's a natural thing to do, is just to, just to put together at least a detailed list of, of what you want to see on every single one, so that each time it comes up, check through. You've got boxes 1 through 10, check them all off. That's it. It, it gives you a repeatable performance, and, and that's all you can ask for out of anything. It's just to get there. It doesn't matter if it's me, if it's Ken. That doesn't matter. It's, it's if you feel comfortable, feel, feel comfortable however you are, you're not going to hurt my feelings. But I want you guys to think about this, because I think this is ultimately where you need to be as a board.
Absolutely.
Jim, you mentioned that the locking up of the properties and things falls under the treasurer's responsibilities, so I get, my question-
I didn't state that, but-
Oh, okay. That's what it sounded like.
Saying that, that I think he thought that that was a tax title.
So to, I do, I think that as well, and I think that's based on the language of the law, which says custodian, the selectman may appoint a custodian who shall have the care, custody, management, and control of all property. So I guess the question is, well, it says shall.
No, but before that, it's a may. You may appoint-
Oh, yeah, we may.
Shall, right? So it says you guys can, but I, whoever has to, right? So if you assign that task, you guys don't foreclose, I don't foreclose, Ken, as tax title, don't, doesn't foreclose. Ken, as treasurer, can, can work with tax consultant, I mean, the legal consultant to foreclose, right? So that process is separate. It's still, nothing changes by who you have in this position.
Okay. It just reads like the care and custody of, sounds like-
Yeah, yeah, custodian, right?
Does it?
We don't, custodians don't own the building, they just keep it open for everybody else, right? They keep it clean, they do the tasks that need to be done. So that's the roles, that's the assignment. There's, there's not a lot there. If you guys decide that the, the custodial work is to bring it for auction, then it goes to auction. If you decide that it's, sit on it, sit on it. If you decide bylaw, then, then work on a bylaw with the people that, who are there.
All right, any, any other questions?
My question is more for the board.
Yeah. Are, are we done with questions for Jim right now? All right, thank you, sir. So go ahead, Kim.
Does it make sense to have a policy before we appoint someone? That's my only question. I don't know the answer to that. I don't want to hold up any auctions or getting this started. I think that it makes sense to get started as soon as possible. If we're going to be talking about a by, I mean, a bylaw or a policy or something, is that something we need to do? It's a question. I don't know the answer.
I guess my only thought on that would be, it'd be kind of nice to have the custodian be a part of that conversation.
Yeah, I agree.
To tell, bring things, and maybe go to other communities or other places and be able to say, "I can do that research and bring it, bring it forward." Whether it's Jim or Ken, I don't know. I just, absolutely, your question, my thought is, what's the custodian?
Chicken or egg question.
Yeah, exactly, totally.
Okay.
My only question is that, what's the advantage of having a middleman? I feel like that's the person that's going to go out and do this, but then have to come back and, and come back to us and go to Mr. Morally, and I'm just not sure there's an advantage to have someone that's going to do that. I don't, I guess I just don't know that, I don't understand that piece of it.
Is it really a middleman, though? I don't know.
Well, that's, I, I don't know. That's what I'm asking. It seems like that. It seems like someone that's going to go out and do all of this work, but then have to go back and get everything signed and approved and come to us, and I just feel like it's adding one more person. It's more of a question, I guess, if that's, that's kind of how I'm looking at it, but I don't know.
So I guess that's what, what the board needs to think. Is it, is it something that we just add on as a responsibility to the existing treasurer or collector or, or somebody else and based on,
Right.
you know, the visions or the views that, that we've heard from both of them?
I'd like, I'd like to give Jim a shot. I'd like to mix it up.
Well, the other thing is, this position serves at the pleasure of the board. Anytime we can, we can reappoint, just like we do with any appointed position.
Sure.
Yeah. I'd like to see what, what Jim can come up with and as somebody kind of from the outside and being able to bring in and bring in some ideas to it, and, and take what was already built from last year, rework it, look at it, and bring it before us. I think it'd be good to have some fresh eyes on it.
Do you want to make that a motion?
Sure. I move the board of selectmen appoint Jim Franklin as Kingston's tax title custodian.
Second.
All right, any discussion before we vote? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against?
No.
So four to one. So thank you, Mr. Franklin. Thank you, Ken, for coming. All right, our next item is a request from the Agricultural Commission to use the townhouse property for September 29th, 2024. We, we discussed this last week, so we just wanted to take a look at the drawings which were sent to us. There was some concern about having animals and whatnot near the new memorial out front and not wanting cows to be plopping, to put it politely. So we did get some, some drawings of, of where everything would be, and it looks like, folks, correct me if I'm wrong, and Kim, you are a nerd. You, you're a PowerPoint nerd.
I overlaid the map and a satellite image.
Which looks great. So my understanding is that there would be vendors right between the building and the monument, and then there would also be vendors out on the outside, but nothing really around where that monument is. The animals would be over on the left side of the building, down the entrance, and then, where are we? The grass, that's, yeah, right over here. So they would not be on the lawn anywhere out front. It's my understanding. Correct? Correct. That's exactly what we propose. All right. Yeah, absolutely.
First of all, we'd like to make it very clear that we do not own the front lawn, and we are able to utilize it for our monument through your good services that you provided with us. And we, back when we were applying for grants for funding, one of our stated principles was that we wanted to use the front lawn and the memorial for educational and other purposes that suit the town. So as long as we are not going to be having any issues with regard to cattle getting loose on the monument, we are more than happy to endorse the project.
Or pooping near the monument.
Right.
Yeah, pretty much so.
Can I just ask you to state your name and address just for the-
Bob Ketter, 17 Pembroke Street, Kingston.
Thank you. So any other questions from the board? I know not everybody was, was here last week when we discussed this. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I appreciated the, the drawing, and I think knowing where everything
Yeah.
will be placed is very helpful when deciding whether or not to support something, so. Thank you for that.
All right. If there's no other, if there are no other comments, questions, someone want to make a motion?
I move to approve the request of the Agricultural Commission to use the townhouse property in the afternoon of September 29th, 2024, from 12:00 PM to 4:30 PM as discussed.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous. All right, moving on. You know what? I just noticed that the chief may be waiting for us to do number seven.
No, he just likes coming to our meetings.
Thank you. So we're going to jump to seven. Chief, am I right? You're waiting for, okay. We'll, we'll, we'll go right to it. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Keith, but we, we voted this last week, but we just got the motion incorrect. We had names-
I, I provide the board with incorrect titles for the people who are going to be Assistant Harbor Master, Deputy Harbor Master, so I apologize for that. So it's on the agenda this evening to appoint the individuals to the correct positions.
Right, so we can correct that motion from last week. So if someone would like to make a motion?
I can do that one.
It is correct in our agenda here.
Okay. I move the board of selectmen appoint Luke Baron, Assistant Harbor Master, and Glenn Kavicki Baron as interim deputy harbor master until the positions are filled permanently.
Second.
Sorry, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Should it be interim on the assistant harbor master too, or no?
Yes.
Yes? All right, so we're adding interim friendly amendment?
After Luke Baron?
Yeah, interim. Okay.
We'll do this again in two more weeks.
New chair.
Are we good? Yeah, sorry. Did we get a second?
Yes, Dawn second.
Okay, all those in favor?
One second.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry.
Okay, yours, okay.
Are we good?
No, 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 actually, no, you're right. It says Glenn Kavicki Baron.
I know. That's why I kind of paused. I was like,
Yeah, yeah, it's just Glenn Kavicki.
Okay, another friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment.
Thank you.
It's a little messy.
We might be doing this again in two weeks.
I was like, I knew that. I was like, I thought I knew Glenn.
You'll be dealing with the shellfish constable and a deputy harbor master anyways in two weeks, so why not?
All right, we, we remove Baron from Glenn Kavicki.
All right, so to be clear, Missy, your motion was to move to appoint Luke Baron interim assistant harbor master-
Assistant harbor master and Glenn Kavicki interim deputy harbor master until the positions are filled permanently.
Second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right, now we shall go back to number one. Temporary road closure request. Rocky Nook Avenue for a neighborhood event on July 4th. We received a request to close the roads down the Nook for the evening of the 4th. It was reviewed by the police and fire chiefs, superintendent of streets, and their recommendations were within our packet. It's been done for several years. There was concerns, I guess, last year about emergency vehicle access being properly maintained, as well as a significant fireworks display being lit. Yeah, chief, go ahead.
So unfortunately, we've had quite a significant issue over the past years with large displays of fireworks. And this is the time of year where the fire chief gets up to be the mean guy and says fireworks in Massachusetts are illegal.
If you weren't going to say it, I was.
Yeah, and so what has happened, and I'm not going to label any one individual or group, is this event is used as support or a reason, or whatever you'd like to term it, to have large fireworks displays. I think over the course of the years, we've been very lucky and not have, had significant injuries from fireworks. Last year, an individual was making his own and caused a bit of a problem, let's, let's, let's say that. So storing large batches of fireworks has a very, very significant consequence. And what we're seeing in that area on 4th of July or the 3rd, those two nights, are very significant displays. That translates into some very significant storage of fireworks somewhere. So that being said, I would like, as I have in the past, for this board to take the position, this is not in support of those fireworks displays. Thank you.
Yeah, so basically, what we have in our packet, town administrators recommending language in our motion to request the police department to enforce emergency vehicle access and also cite anyone using fireworks in their presence. So any, and this is in here, so any comments, questions before we make a motion? All right, would someone like to make this motion?
I'll read the novel. I move the board of selectmen approve the request from Rebecca Hebert to close a portion of East Avenue at Bayview Avenue, West Avenue at Bayview Avenue, Cole Street at Bagnell Street, and a portion of Rocky Nook Avenue from the intersection East Avenue at Bayview Avenue, no, that doesn't make sense. We have a repeat here. At, does that make sense? East Avenue at Bayview Avenue, I already said that, to the intersection of Rocky Nook Avenue at North Street, Thursday, July 4th, 2024, during the hours of 7:00 PM through 11:00 PM with the following conditions. Access for emergency vehicles is always maintained. All barricades must be placed to allow emergency responders to quickly move them. Sections of closed roads must have a width of 10 feet to allow for apparatus access. I'll say at least 10 feet. The petitioner secures barricades and road clothes to signage from the highway department to be erected by the petitioners during the event. Notification is made by the petitioner to the neighborhood residents that are affected by the road closure. And lastly, we instruct the police department to take appropriate legal action against- And lastly, we instruct the police department to take appropriate legal action against private citizens who use, possess, or sell fireworks.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? No, it's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for reading that. Next item is the acceptance of the Executive Secretary for the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's vacant due to resignation. And after the recruitment process, the Community Development Director, Building Commissioner Jason Silva requests the appointment of Gene Dunn to the position. Would someone like to make that motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint Gene Dunn to the position of Executive Secretary, Zoning Board of Appeals, a C two stipend position as part of the wage and personal bylaws with anticipated start date of July first, two thousand and twenty four, consistent with the terms of the offer letter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous. We now need to do an acceptance of timeline for the two thousand and twenty four Fall Special Town Meeting. At our last meeting, we voted to set the meeting for Tuesday, November nineteenth. Included in our materials, we have a proposed timeline of when it would be opened and closed and whatnot. Do we have any questions or comments on that before making a motion? All right, anyone want to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the proposed Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four Special Fall Town Meeting timeline.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that was unanimous.
You're going to vote no?
All right. Annual reappointments. We had a list provided to us of the yearly renewals of the Board and Commission reappointments and their expiration dates. If we support the list as presented, a motion to accept the list as presented can be made, or we can remove one or more from that list if we need to. We did have a late addition. What was it? What was this? Control, that's right. So if there's no holds on that list?
Two questions.
Yeah.
One is, there's one person I need to not vote on, which is a Thomas Bouchard Senior. But everybody else I'd like to be able to vote on. And then if there's a no response in the letter, are we just...
We're not reappointing them, right? They say no?
No, I mean, it says response to reappointment letter. There's a couple no's in there.
Yeah, I had two people reach out that said they do not want to be reappointed.
Right.
So on that, so the no's on that list are people that do not want to be appointed?
Correct.
Okay, so there'll be an opening for the...
I believe it's the Planning Board Associate Member and Waterfront Committee.
Okay.
So what about the people who didn't respond?
I'm going to reach out to them again and then just give them another chance.
So do we, are we tonight just reappointing the people who said yes?
Correct.
Unless we have an objection, which I don't.
And how do we handle abstention? Do we need to take two votes? Or he would just abstain from the one?
I think you have to take two votes.
I think you have to do two.
So why don't we do a vote to reappoint just Tom Bouchard?
All right, so I move the Board approve Tom Bouchard, appoint Tom Bouchard as, what is he, on here, a plumbing inspector?
Plumbing and gas inspector.
Yeah.
But I won't speak to it again.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No's?
Abstain.
Abstention. So four yeses, one abstention. And now I think we can make a motion to approve the rest of the list except for Tom Bouchard.
Right. So I move the Board approve the list of candidates who have expressed yes, with the exception of the one we've already voted, up for reappointment to their Board or Commission as shown on the master list.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Okay.
I'm busy taking notes and not voting. Yeah, no, I'm good.
That was unanimous. Thank you. And thank you for not making us read the list. Number five, appointment to Affordable Housing Trust and Agricultural Commission. So we do need to appoint a board member to both the Affordable Housing Trust and the Agricultural Commission. Same person does not have to do both, so you can do one or the other or none. So we have two, is there anybody interested in the Affordable Housing Trust being the appointed member of that? And before you answer, how many meetings, when do they meet? How often do they meet? I don't know that.
Say they meet like once a month.
Okay.
I think they meet the first Thursday of each month.
Okay.
But all meetings have remote participation.
All meetings what?
Have remote participation.
Right.
I'm trying to make it more appealing for people to sign up for stuff. So I'm going to volunteer for something later in the agenda.
So if no one else is interested, I will do it. But if somebody, the Affordable Housing...
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint Eric Crone to the Affordable Housing Trust as the Board of Selectmen representative with a term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty five.
Second.
That's how you get it done.
I'm not even going to call a vote on that. Moving on. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I should have said no.
Yeah.
So at least I could tell my wife that I did vote against it.
You didn't say sign up for anything new.
All right, so on to the next item. We do need to appoint somebody to the Agricultural Commission. Any interest there? Didn't you do it before, Don?
I was on it before.
He's also on the three hundred, though.
I'm on the three hundred. I just signed up for the police one as well. So if someone else would be interested, otherwise I can continue.
What's the tithing on that, again?
They, I would say they meet at...
Let me see if I can find one.
Eight times a year. They're not every month. They're supposed to be every month, but they've missed meetings. So I would probably say...
No, they're evening?
No, but I'm just saying, like, they've had meetings where they've skipped.
Do you have chickens or do you have like a garden or anything? Like, that's all you need to qualify.
You don't need anything to qualify.
I, I, I can do that. I can do that.
All right.
It looks like once a month, looking at their notes.
Do you know what day of the month of this job?
Uh, it looks like, oh, they don't say that.
Is that May twenty fifth?
That one was the twenty third.
I just don't want to volunteer for a conflict with recreation.
Thursday.
It's only twice a week.
Thursday at seven P M.
All right, does someone want to make that motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint Missy Bateman to the Agricultural Commission as the Board of Selectmen representative with a term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous. All right, another exciting one. Discussion on creating a working group for the privately owned transfer station. We did have a developer present, a privately run transfer station proposal to the board. During that, there was a suggestion that we have a working group made up of streets, trees, and parks superintendent, building official, planning director, town administrator, one selectman, and one planning board member. So if we're interested in creating that working group, we should appoint a member.
I have a question. Building official means could be community development director, could be building inspector, could be...
It'll be a building inspector.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be Jason.
So building inspector.
Yes.
And then planning director is Valerie, I'm assuming the planning, okay. Planner. I'm interested in that, if anyone, if you guys are on board with that.
So someone want to make that motion with appointing her?
I can do that.
Unless you want to run against her, we can debate.
No, I got this. I can move, I'll move it. I move the Board of Selectmen establish a working group made up of the following individuals. Streets, trees, and parks superintendent, the building inspector, planning director, town administrator, Kim Emberg, and one planning board member.
Don't say Kim Emberg, they'll say...
One selectman and one planning board member, and appoint Kim Emberg as the Board of Selectmen representative to the transfer station working group.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, guys.
Do we need to move to reconsider the Affordable Housing Trust and debate that? No?
No.
I don't want people to think that I don't want to do it.
Can we actually change the term to make it like a five-year term for the Affordable?
Ooh, I like that. All right.
All right.
This board can do whatever you want. Can I just ask, I apologize, I need to go backwards for a second.
Yeah.
On the police department slash fire department expansion, is that a working, I apologize, working group or committee? And there is a difference, and I just want to make sure that whatever group that is determined to be follows whatever the appropriate...
We did say committee.
We said committee. So the difference between a working group and a committee would be the committee has to post forty-eight hours advance, there's all sorts of other... So the way that you did the police station, I mean, not police station, police chief search was a working group.
Right.
So you guys had a little bit more flexibility.
But like the M B T task force is, you have to actually post it, you have to be on Zoom, same rules as we do it here.
So I think it, I think it probably needs to be that way, I think.
So, so, again, there's two other members here, but my suggestion would be the board consider a working group. And the reason I say that is there could be potentially an opportunity for both chiefs, myself, and the building official to be having a conversation. That would be, that would be, you know, a majority that would be a violation of open meeting law. And I don't want that to happen, but I think there's going to be an opportunity where we want to get together and talk briefly about something that we can, that would not allow us to do that if it was a committee.
I mean, I don't have a problem with that. My only concern is I would request that someone keeps track of all the things that, in terms of like keeping us updates on what's going on, and I'm not worried about every minute of every conversation being recorded, but it would be nice to just get regular updates on where things stand.
And I think for the public standpoint, too, having some public facing meetings.
Oh, we will.
It makes sense, because I mean, how can you, how can you move, I'm glad you brought it up, I mean, how can you move business along when you're in, when you're in the same building?
But if we made it a nine-member committee, then you wouldn't be in violation of four of you.
Let's just make it a twenty-four member.
I'm serious. That's what it was before. I'm not joking. And I don't know that we can make that decision right now.
Can you repeat what you said, just so I can understand it?
I was just saying, if we made it a nine-member committee instead of the seven plus one, so it's seven, so four is a quorum. If it's nine, five is a quorum, so the four of them could talk.
So they could have a conversation.
Because there's too many of them.
Yeah.
Well, it's one more person, though.
It seems like it'd be... Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So there's two words that I want to really force now, transparency and trust, right? You hire the people in this room because you trust us to do a job, right? So you should expect from us the transparency and regular reports that come with trusting the people that work for you. I don't think I have ever failed you. I'm sure Brian won't, right? I'm probably here more than you'd like me to be, frankly, right? So you've got a big project, you entrust us with multimillion dollar budgets, dear God, can you trust us to talk to each other? Right? And then on top of it, can you trust us to talk to you? The limits of a, the limits of a committee are around an open meeting law that's designed to force transparency. So in my view, by forcing a committee, you're forcing the people that you trust to have to be transparent, which I would hope you trusted us to do anyway. So my thoughts on this is working group, and these are my personal thoughts. Working group, trust us to report, Keith, Chief Holmes, myself, other members of the committee as necessary, but allow us the flexibility to get this job done in a reasonable period of time. Let's look at how many years we've been working on this, folks. Do we want to drag it out further?
And I will, I will commit to providing an update to the board in every, in every one of my town administrator updates. So you'll get something every couple of weeks, and again, there are times I'm sure where you guys see another email from me during the day and nauseous, and you say, my gosh. So we will continue to correspond with the board, and again, we're not trying to exclude anybody else, but there's just going to be times where we have the opportunity to have a quick conversation, and I don't want to break any open meeting laws by doing that.
I don't think anybody's disagreeing with you. I think, do we need to...
I can move to reconsider the vote on the type of group for the public safety building project.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So now we now actually have to redo the vote, the original motion? So just change the word from committee to working group?
I move the Board, yeah, but there was other changes that I made.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I move the Board appoint a public safety building working group for the purpose of recommending a location design and proposed cost for the new police station and central fire station expansion. Committee members to include the police chief, fire chief, town administrator, building inspector, one selectman, one finance committee member, and one capital planning committee member. And further, to appoint Don Alkembright as the selectman representative.
Did we also add an ex officio?
Yes, and one ex officio member from the prior building, police station building committee.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we did do the vote on number six, right, the owner, the privately owned transfer station?
Yep, and seven, we're done.
Yep, so we're on to meeting minutes. Someone want to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen accept the open session meeting minutes of April ninth, two thousand and twenty four, April twenty third, two thousand and twenty four, May twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. Open session meeting minutes as amended, and June eleventh, two thousand and twenty four as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, town administrator report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few things to keep the board up to date on. The finance committee meeting, finance committee, finance committee, my gosh, will be meeting before the fifteenth of July to review any final budget transfers for fiscal twenty four. So I would assume those budget transfers will be coming to the board at your January, July second board meeting, two weeks from today. The Veterans Memorial work will continue in front of the townhouse next Monday. They expect that to be done by mid-July, which will include sidewalks, sodding, and just cleanup of the property and just final installation of a number of things. The Kingston Water Department today closed on the property that they are hoping to have a new well site drilled on, which is great news. I did share a couple of times with the water superintendent that we are having a fall town meeting, and if the water commissioners are prepared to present a proposed cost to develop that new well, that that would be a great time to do that. We were notified today that the proposed twelve-unit Mae Ave development has been, is no longer seeking approval from the Z B A. They are instead going to be going through the State Housing Appeal Board, which is disappointing in that the zoning board will no longer have an ability to have a say in that. However, in talking to Attorney Tallerman, depending on how things shake out, there's opportunities for a number of appeals, if the town's not satisfied with what the Housing Appeals Board decides, and will likely take several years to get a final decision out of, so that could be delayed significantly. The Council on Aging is pursuing a grant through Hanaford Grocery Stores. The grant is named Connection Health Equity in Food. It funds projects that support the need to serve, to the needs for underserved diverse older adults. They'll be looking to replace some kitchen equipment in support of their cafe, and they'll also be looking to expand the cafe to provide meals for people under sixty years of age moving forward. A number of council on agings in the area are doing that. They're finding it very, very well received, so they're looking to do the same. And the installation of the portable air conditioning units have started at the Reed Center, which is great news, and they hope to have that done sometime in early July. As you may be aware, today, I believe it was, or maybe yesterday, the Shellfish Constable and one of the Assistant Harbor Masters, Joe Zlokar, has submitted his letter of resignation effective today. The police chief and harbor master will bring a name forward to act as an acting Shellfish Constable and Assistant Harbor Master at your July second meeting, with advertising going out for those positions later on this week. Be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Any questions? No? Any selectman comments?
Tyler?
No.
Kim?
I just want to mention, I think at the end of the year, our schedule has us meeting on New Year's Eve. So eventually, we should probably look at that, because I don't know if it's, you know, Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve.
Sounds like a good time to me.
Just wanted to point that out.
Who doesn't want to do it?
We should wear our selectman polos that day, really celebrate.
I guess thank everybody for their patience with all the work going on, three A. on the sidewalks. So hopefully that'll be wrapping up soon, but I appreciate what they're attempting to do right now and thank everyone for...
And again, just so people are aware, the water project will be starting sometime in the near future that runs from approximately Cancun north on Route three for a bit. So that's going to be happening later this summer as well. It's potentially some traffic issues, but... It's potentially some traffic issues, but again, it's necessary work that's going to improve the water quality in town, so thank you for your patience, and don't be afraid to use Route 3.
I did one thing, sorry. Don't miss the opportunity to speak much. No, we have the Chief of Police here, but yeah, I want to thank the Kingston Police Department for what seemed to be a very wild situation yesterday on a chase of a human that was running and did a lot of bad things in the middle of it, and put our officers in harm's way and made a situation. But as always, the department does an incredible job. And thank you guys for just, you know, going out there and serving, protecting in a very difficult situation, and we appreciate it.
Dawn, anything? Missy?
I have one more thing, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Did you have anything?
I want to go home too, trust me.
Go ahead, Keith.
I just wanted to let the Board know, I know, I believe the entire Board received an email from a resident today on Main Street making you aware of some improvements that Eversource had made on some poles on the corner of Main and Green Streets. So I reached out to Evergreen, to Eversource, had a conversation and verified with them that the approval that the Board gave on August 15th for Green Street work was, included the work that was done at the corner there, that the work on Main Street did not, was, did not include the improvements that the property owner had voiced some concerns over in his email. So they did have authority to do what they did. I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. The only thing I also wanted to add is several months ago, you guys appointed me as a liaison with Silver Lake on the safety issue over on Route 27 and Lake Street Station Street by Ninos. And there've been more accidents. There've been several, and the owners of Ninos have a great cam, a professional Ring Cam. So they've provided some video to our public safety. And I saw one, a car just coming up Lake Street, did not even slow down, went right through, looked like an accident. Going right, obviously, went right across 27 and T-boned, and a car flipped. Everyone was eventually okay, but there were there were definitely injuries. And it's something that the town and Silver Lake are continuing to move on. We're going to be applying for some grant money. There's been, look at a traffic light, which would cost under a million dollars, but then would cost ongoing maintenance down the road. The preference seems to be for a roundabout, not a rotary, but a roundabout, which is smaller, kind of like the one in Thank you, Winter Street in Duxbury, something along those lines. But, and that would be about a million and a half, but there's definitely grant money that we would be going after for something like that. So it's definitely a dangerous part of town. And the Chief is already, having started, he's been working with local groups around the town, meeting with different neighborhoods about their concerns about safety, and, you know, when we, when we were looking for Chiefs, we're looking at, and we talked to Chief Holmes about some strategies to make our roads a little bit safer. And Chief has some great ideas, and he'll be coming back to present some of these to us, but also working with the Highway Department on putting some of these into practice with signs, painting, that sort of thing. So that's ongoing. And we are having a meeting Thursday on the roundabout project up there by Silver Lake. So we definitely have to do something. Just wanted to give that update. If there's no other comments, what? Okay. Our next regular meeting is July 2nd. I can't believe it's almost July. So two more weeks. And would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.